Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education's special meetings. This is our budget workshop number two, January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. At six p.m. we are calling the meeting to order at this time, and please join us for the budget.
I would like to leave it to the United States of America and to the British Union, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would now welcome folks here for a presence to speak. Speakers will be recognized by the chairwoman and identify themselves by name and address, and proceed with their comments. The total time allotted for present to speak shall not exceed twenty minutes, and without the discretion of the board, we may not address specific personnel issues. That's our policy, ninety three twenty five. Is there anybody in the room?
There is nobody in the room, minus these people in here. There's nobody in the waiting room or online.
Okay. And we shall move on.
You are.
Okay. Agenda item number four is a review of the programs that were previously presented the last time we met. That was program one, two, and four. And so, program one is for Central Elementary School. Program two was Hall Memorial Middle, and core R is our transportation budget. So, is there anything anybody wanted to ask? Is there anything that you needed to add?
The only question that that I had gotten last meeting was about the replacement cycle for technology. Nova just sent me something today. It's hot off the press. I haven't even had a chance to look at it. But they basically put on like our Promethean boards, our laptops, our Chromebooks. There's nothing in the current cycle, but they do. They're laying out that that we basically send you the plan. And I'll send that off to you. I don't think I need to do it in a meeting like this. I can just send it to you. It's a while before somebody wants it. But most of the stuff is out multiple years. So that was one thing. And then the other other thing was, I just, this is the five point three seven percent increase in me feeling a little not so comfortable about it. I, we get reports from CASBO, which is the Business Managers Group in the state. And there, every district has their, all their information listed. They posted the budget so far. Superintendent, some were approved already by Boards of Finance. It depends on your town. The average right now was, there were twenty nine districts that had posted, and the average was four nine one.
Oh.
So, we, there were some that were really, really high. So, what I'll tell you is, it made me, made me feel a little bit better. Like, you know, I put a rather large increase in front of you, but that is, I can keep you kind of posted on that. There were very, very few that were in the ones. I didn't see any, a single zero, very few of the two, and most were three, four, five, six, seven, like in that range. And there were a few outliers, like nine, ten. You can write in the comments in the section, the couple that were on the higher side, big increases in health insurance. We don't see them. So, that's really all I would share as far as updates, unless you have any other questions for one, two, or four.
I think. I have like a, sorry. Well, go ahead, Sam. I have kind of like a general question, I guess. I don't know if that really pertains to those specific groups. But can you remind me, our non-lapsing fund, is that a certain percentage of our overall budget is allowed to go up to?
So, we can have it capped out at like two percent of your current year budget. We're pretty close to maxed out right now, but it's probably, and you'll hear me say this when we get the special ed budget today, there's no money in this budget where we have non-lapsing funds applied, because I expect that the majority of what's in there now is going to cover your shortfall in special ed this year. That's another reason that it's that special ed is high, because if we applied a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, special ed program looks okay. But that number, Sam, to be honest with you, could be zero. If we don't return anything this year and we spend it all, there's a, there's a good chance it could be zero this year. We'll have no buffer, and there's nothing applied in this budget with these funds.
Okay. And then, the non-lapsing fund, something that us at the Board of Education created, or?
So, it's, it's legislated. Yeah, it's legislated. So, it used to be one percent that you could do. Now it's two percent. It's something where Board of Education requests there, depending on your town charter or what you have, if you just follow statute. You, your Board of Ed can request the funds. So, we request the Board of Finance. We say, we're going to return three hundred thousand dollars this year. Can we have X number of dollars to put into our non-lapsing fund? We can't go over, over a certain amount. It's typically around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars could potentially be one outplacement, depending on what that placement is. That would be an expensive one, but there's potential for that. So, but it is a decision, a local decision, that's driven by statute. So, it comes from you. If the Board of Finance says, no, we're, we're taking the money, we're putting it back in the general fund. That's up to them. I think it's worked out so far where they understand such as a year as this year. Because if we didn't have that money, I would either be laying off numerous staff to keep your ballot, your budget balanced, or we'd be going back to them. If we didn't have a non-lapsing account, we can't overspend our budget. So, I'd have to lay off people, or I'd have to go back and you'd have to send me back to the Board of Finance and say, we need an increase in our budget. And if they said no, guess what? We'd be laying people off, because it's the only way you would make up hundreds of thousands of dollars in a deficit. You'll get more good information at your February meeting that we're working on, on that front. But there's nothing applied in the non-lapsing right now. That could change by next meeting. That's where it's why this, the, the special ed world, it goes heads and clothes. Funding wise, it's volatile.
And we're only, are we only allowed to use the non-lapsing fund for special ed, or that's our kind of?
It's typical, you can use it for educational purposes, but that's typically what it's used for.
Good question. Jen, can I just ask a question about the, the Nova thing that you just talked about?
Yes.
Since it's out, would that, would that go in the CIP?
So, years ago, CIP, and this is probably predates everyone on the board, all boards, your board and probably the CIP committee, maybe not Christina. There's very few people that would be in the know on this. They took out rubs and computers. Hey, they said those things don't belong in CIP. The argument is really like, well, if we're going to replace laptops, sixty laptops for staff, it's going to cost twenty five thousand dollars. So, why wouldn't that be there? So, we've been paying for it either within a budget. Your last purchase was, your laptops were purchased with end of the year savings funds. And instead of turning it back, the board said, let's renew those, 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 you know, Chromebooks or iPads or laptops. Prior to that, we had a multi-year lease with an option to buy for a dollar. So, we had in the budget, there was a lease, an annual lease payment for staff laptops. That was a three-year lease. And at the end of the third year, we bought them. I think we used them for one more year, and then they said, it's time. And so, we bought new laptops. So. But that's where, it's just like CIP, to be honest with you, where it's hard to keep up with some of the cycles. So, you know, because it's expensive. If you were going to replace a Promethean board every ten years, we all know in this room what our cell phones look like fifteen years ago and what they do now. Technology is moving really fast. So, we have Chromebooks right now. Kevin Icardi and I joke for Nova, we're joking about this today, saying, we might not have Chromebooks in five years, because it might be something different. That's more powerful. And so, we are laying out a plan for replacement, but that may change.
John, did you have anything you wanted to ask?
Nope.
You want to go, Jason, thank?
No, I just really appreciated the information you got for the different schools in special ed. I enjoyed reading them this year. I mean, I've read them in the past, but this year it seemed like there was more meat in, you know, they were just really good things.
Those are the one and only.
Yeah.
Paras, right? Are y'all set together? Should we go into rock? Okay. So, then, we're going to move on to agenda item number five, which is the review of program three, Special Education and Related Services.
So, I'm, this is not normally how I run this program, but just because of where this budget is this year, I do it a little bit different. I thought it was important to publicly have this conversation. It's recorded. People are going to watch it, but they're going to want to know why the budget that I'm proposing is so high. You need to have some background knowledge in special education. If you don't have that knowledge, you're going to go, what in the world is going on? Why is it so high? Because it is millions of dollars in your budget. And so, Marsha and I talked, just making sure you and the public understand the identification process, the types of services that are provided under the special education umbrella, and how they're implemented or facilitated. And then, the steps that we take, and every district might be a little bit different, but the significant number of steps that we take before a decision is made to go, we might need to look at an outplacement, which is a significant decision that's made by a planning and placement team. So, I asked Marsha just to do, give a high-level overview, like, this is special education crash, crash course one oh one, before I go through these, just so people understand the what, what does this look like? What are we talking about? Okay?
Hello. So, I'm going to talk kind of globally about our program, but I wanted to start off by saying that, you know, I have to be, we all have to be that we're not speaking about specific students, and that's a little bit hard to do when we're in such a small district, because our percentages are so small. For those of you who are not in education, we follow what's called FERPA, which is basically your HIPAA, like in medical terms, it turns, FERPA is your educational terms, the Family Rights and Privacy Educational Act. So, so, I'm not going to talk, of course, about specific students, but I'm going to talk globally about what, what does our special education program look like? So, it's a continuum of services. We really, we meet as a planning and placement team when a student is referred to special education, and we do full assessments. Students can be referred either through their teacher, the student assistance team, a parent, through the birth to three system, which we are seeing a lot of referrals through birth to break, especially this year. A lot of these students are coming in typically with speech and language concerns. So, we are assessing students even before they turn three to see if they qualify for services. The other way that we have students entering the special ed is when they move into district. So, when they come into district from another town, we take their IEP. We are required to provide the services that they have in their IEP. We would meet as a team to make sure that we are meeting their services in our district. Sometimes we have to tweak a little bit, just because we have different schedules, but we really have to take their program and make sure that we're providing the same services in our district. So, those are kind of the ways that students are referred to special education. As a planning and placement team, you look at how we can best meet the students' needs. Our focus is to always ensure that we are looking, looking at least restrictive environment for these kiddos, which means that the best we can provide these services in the classroom is really what we hope for the students. But if they are needing more service, then we look at the continuum. So, we provide services in the continuum of services, which would mean either pushing into the classroom, or special ed teachers push in and support the students in maybe their language arts, their math classes. We also have a direct instruction class, where if students see more specialized instruction, they would then go into the special education room and be provided their curriculum in math setting. We provide supportive resource through instruction, where during, for example, at hall during their win or what I need class, they would come and see their special ed teacher to work on their goals and objectives in their IEP. While students are in district, we also look at if they require related services, which there was write-ups in your packet, which would be speech and language services for language articulation, pragmatics, or occupational therapy services. A lot of times, that could be handwriting, helping students with handwriting support, OT, making sure that our students can ambulate through the building, are able to access the playground curriculum, the playground equipment.
PT. You said OT.
What did I do?
Okay, we're, we're helping each other. That's what we do.
My brain is a little bit foggy today. So, speech, OT, PT. So, these are services that we provide when the PPT team identifies that a student requires these services, so they can better access the curriculum.
Could you pause for a second? So, just the PPT team is the team that makes up the school folks and the parents. So, that's a decision that's made together. It's not just a school-based team that's making the decision. It's everyone together. And if they, they don't agree, there's a process that could follow through as well. It's not just, we make the decisions as an administrator or a teacher. It goes through that whole process. So, thanks.
Another service that we provide is BCBA, a board certified behavioral analysis. And that's somebody who comes in, we contract through Eastcon. They come in, we have them once, once a week. They provide services to specific teams where those students are struggling more with the behavioral side. So, they come in and they meet with the teams on a weekly basis, and they help develop behavior intervention plans, they track data, and support the teams to best support the student. When we are able to, when we are not able to provide services for the students in district, where we're looking to see if the student's making progress, if they're not making progress, and we're not able to provide the services, then we look towards outplacement. We look towards programs that can best meet the student's needs. Many times, you will find that these are students who are on the autism spectrum, who need a myriad of services. Really, a big part of their day, most of their day is spent in special education, or we're looking at students who really need more clinical behavioral support. So, those are the two areas that we find students are, we need to, we need to basically look for programs who specialize in those areas, where we cannot provide that in district. So, I think that's the kind of the overview.
Yeah, I think so. And I, I guess the recap for the last part there is probably really important for people to understand that it's not just a snap decision to go, we need to have the student, we need to be looking at outplacement for the student. There is a ton of work, often months and months and months, whether it's data collection, whether it's new assessment or reassessment, reviewing old assessments, trying different things, including BCBA hours. It's, there's a ton that goes into that before that decision is ever made. She talked about least restrictive environment. That is a legal term, a hundred percent. You go to court for any special education case, you're going to talk about least restrictive environment. And so, sometimes the environment that we're providing is not at least least restrictive for a student, and that might be one of the core reasons that we just can't provide the programming, and it needs to be looked at for an outplacement. So, it's not a light decision, and we often don't have many students in Wellington require an outplacement. Right now, we do. It's the most I can ever remember in my twenty-plus years in Wellington. So, it's, it's significant. And that just comes and goes. The piece that Marsha didn't talk about is that sometimes someone can move into district, and they could already be outplaced. So, she mentioned a student who comes in and we review their IP. Well, that student could already be outplaced already, and they're probably going to stay there unless we have something super special. We have outstanding staff, but from a really specific behavior-type program, that's just not what typically public schools have the ability to offer. The type of programs we're sending students to, and I'll give you an example, might have their own school psychologist, their own social worker, their own OT, their own PT, their own.
BCBA.
BCBA. Like, it's just that, you know, small school has the core for that. So, if you were going to create something like, the people would say, well, why don't you create your own in Wellington? Well, we would need another Marsha just to operate that, that program. You would need your own BCBA. There's a hundred thousand dollars, teacher salary plus benefits. You need an OT and PT. There's probably another hundred thousand dollars each. It adds up fast. And what I think we've seen from other places is that that have tried this and to create programs, people go, hey, that place has a great program. I'm moving there. Next thing you know, it balloons, and you're required to provide.
And also even just equipment. There's a lot of equipment involved with, you know, these students who are receiving a larger amount of occupational therapy or physical therapy. So, you know, it's not just the staffing, it's the equipment, and it's the availability or the time of the staffing that is much more increased than you see in, in public school setting.
So, again, the point is that, and this whole budget is just the way we write our budget, it's an individual needs budget. This is a budget that when we write, no matter whether it's special education or not, it's a need-based budget for students, and that's how we write this. So, just because it's a separate program, it's based upon student need. That's how it's developed. The challenge of this one is you have very little flexibility. You, you particularly had very little say in what you provide. The dollar amount that we put in front of you, the, the amount that you really could change, and I'm not joking when I say this, is probably around twenty thousand dollars out of a couple million. And the twenty thousand dollars that you could impact would be the supplies that would be to Marsha's program, supplies like paper. I don't know how that would work. You know, when you're printing EPs and documentation, things like that. So, the wiggle room in this program is very small. And it's, it is, you are required to provide these services. So, just, I think that's a good snapshot before I jump in and show you the big picture. Questions about what we just went through?
I, I just have a little tiny question.
Yeah.
Do we have any kind of like benchmarks or methodology to get kids back in district? Like, if they're showing, demonstrating success in their outplacements?
We do. I mean, every program is a little different, you know, on what, what they look at. I have found success with specific programs who really focus on trying to build those skills to bring students back. Every time we meet, every year, we're required to meet at the planning and placement team, and that is one discussion when you have a student in and outplacement. You know, what, what are we looking for to bring him back? We have had success in bringing some students back within the time I've been here. I can't speak before that. And it's been so nice to see that students grow. I can't give an example. I'm sure that's where my mind's going, but it's exciting. But, yes, so every program's a little bit different, and it's really individualized for every student, you know, in regards to what is it that we need to see growth in to bring them back to district.
Yeah, and I'm not asking that question even primarily from a financial perspective. I think that as a Board of Education, our goal should be having all our kids in districts, and to be able to do that and to be able to facilitate, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So, you've seen this, this picture before. Your staffing that's at the top of this, we have one administrator, Marsha, is assigned to this, this program. Specifically, she does the full PPTs. We're required to have an administrator in these PPTs. It's when you have eighty-six students identified. It's, it's a lot of meetings. So, there's a, an admin there. You can see the number of certified teachers. Those certified teachers, it's, it's just in the teacher's side of it. So, that includes a school psychologist in that number. It includes a preschool teacher in that number. There are three special ed teachers at center school and four special education teachers at hall. So, you could say there's four special ed at center, just if you add the preschool teacher. And then, there's a speech and language teacher as well. So, the speech and language is one of the things I talked about last time, with creativity. We have one person described with, than a support parent. So, when you look at the staffing, it's not, again, that point zero six is just applied to the grants, preschool grant, and the point nine four is certified EDA. It's the total number of staff is, is, that's theirs, is ten teachers, okay? The OTPT, that's combined, they make up point six five of a full-time person. I will just say that we are very lucky with our OTPT, as flexible as they are. They work for numerous districts around us, including Wellington. The hours work for us, and oftentimes, specifically PT, we share equipment. Equipment is very, very expensive. So, they will bring things from us to Tallinn, or Tallinn to us, or wherever they're working. Those things go, oh, look at that. We're talking about special ed, and special ed teacher comes in. We share that equipment. So, it's, it's important to know, and again, it's identified by, through the PPT. The secretary is one point two five, is a portion of a secretary at center. That's part of her job that she does. And then, Marsha has a, the assistant at Hall School that's identified full-time special education needs. The number of paraprofessionals is, is nineteen, it's eighteen, it's down one, I believe, from, from what we budgeted this year. The thing that's important to remember about paraprofessionals is that number changes at the drop of a hat. Tomorrow, it could be twenty, maybe not tomorrow, but it could happen where there's a PPT meeting, and they say the student needs support, and they, they need a one-to-one paraprofessional, and you have to provide it, so that the number goes up, and it might not be budgeted. We don't keep people on if they're not tied to hours. When, and Marsha, I will tell you, prior to Marsha coming on, she has whittled this down to, this is what you need. And they really, the two principals really know, Erin knows, that when it comes down to service hours and looking at scheduling, it matters, because that's how you provide, maximize your time for paraprofessionals in classrooms. And she's always battling about that, like, how can we make it work so we can provide the, the proper amount of support the students need that's in their IEP without making significant changes.
Juice, sorry. You say that there was eighty-six identified?
Eighty-six students are identified with special education needs, and that, the, is the gamut. So, you might have some students that are just receiving speech and language services. And then, you might have someone on the other end of the spectrum who is receiving all sorts of pull-out hours, or outplaced, or OT, PT, speech, BCBA hours, the whole gamut. It could be a lot.
That's almost a quarter of our total population of students.
Correct.
Well, it does also factor in magnet school students.
Yes.
Which is a smaller percent, but.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Magnet school students, students who live in district, but attend magnet, oversee their special education services.
We're still required to provide that, that service.
Is that a high percentage, or?
No. Eighty-six, you mean it?
Out of eighty-six, no.
No, no, no. The overall is eighty-six. So, typically.
It, it's high. It's a little bit on the higher end of average for the state.
Okay. We're, we're not through the roof. And a couple of years ago, and actually, Marsha was here for this, we actually hired someone to do an audit, because we wanted to know, number one, are we over-identifying? Number two, when you're identified with special education needs, do you ever get out of it? Can you ever find a way to get the, you know, the instruction that you need, or can we meet your needs so that you're out of it? And the answer was everything. We were not over-identifying. We were exiting kids when they were, should have been exited. We were bringing students in when they should have been brought in. So, and we were, I hate to say this a certain way, but turning students away that were not eligible, because sometimes the students are ineligible the first time they come up for PPT. And so, that audit kind of was a, a good checkpoint for us to go, we're doing a good job of how we're, where our numbers are, who we have. Just depends on your talent. Okay, so let me go through the rest of this. So, you can see the salaries that are there. There's a slight decline in the teachers' portion. We have right now two people that I believe are, one, I know that is absolutely leaving, is retiring. Came out of retirement to work for us for a couple of years, and is retiring, so I will have an opening there. So, we dropped salary down some to a different level, so that it's not that I am saving money. It's just that we expect it's going to be a lower salary. The school choice came down a little bit, but that's, it's not much. The outside counseling, we took out a couple of years ago, and, and we, because we have the in-house stuff that we can do, it's just, it's working. The paraprofessional number doesn't look like it's, it's, or it looks like it's significant. That paraprofessional, we contract sometimes through Eastcon, and so, that would be the cost of a paraprofessional through Eastcon. Prior to Marsha and I, the majority of our pairs in, in this district were through Eastcon. And when she and I came aboard, we really looked at those numbers and found that it was actually more expensive to go through Eastcon than it was to hire our own into our own union. And, I mean, I would sit, just really be blunt, Marsha's probably saved you a couple hundred thousand dollars plus in the cost of pairs, because we've gone that route and not maintained through Eastcon. We still have one there. And it's not a bad thing to keep that relationship, because sometimes if you have a need, and you have a relationship, it helps you. Um, and it's not a bad thing to keep that relationship, because sometimes if you have a need and you have a relationship, it helps you. Um, so that really, the sixty-eight to thirty-seven really is probably two people bound down to one. Um, the BCBA numbers is that behavior consultant is what she just talked about. Uh, that number has gone up because it's, we're seeing an increased need there. So you see the thirty-five thousand to forty-six thousand, we, that's just more hours. Um, that's an area that Marsha and I are looking to be creative. Uh, you know, whether that's, you know, considering trying to find our own a couple of days a week, whether it's a shared service, whether it's a different agency, BCBA hours are expensive. Um, but they are needed. The wealth of the, is the after-school program specifically tied to special education. Um, we left the seven thousand dollars in there. That is um, has been running for many, many, many years. Uh, and is is flat because they can work within that budget. You see an increase in summer school. Uh, we had a an accurate calculation this year, and I said, don't say the other years weren't inaccurate. It's just that we use an actual. We realized we were over budget. And so we said we need to budget a little bit closer, and so that twenty-five thousand is more aligned to what we expect for special education in the summer of twenty-four. Uh, evaluations is flat. Uh, those are, you need to have those evaluations. Um, the, obviously I skipped over, uh, oh, I skipped over a couple. Um, I skipped over the tuition outplacement on purpose. The school choices there, as I already said, the the um, last one I'll say is the trans, uh, Horizons is like a a summer program as well. Obviously, the two bubbles around there are outplacement and transportation, and they are a hundred percent tied together. Um, those numbers are before receiving excess cost grant money back from the state. So you can see when we had budgeted two at three sixty-two and now we're budgeting four at five seventy-eight, and that's a lot of money in in increase in your budget. Same thing in the transportation. Remember though, it is a need and it is a requirement and it's legal. Um, you don't have a choice in those. So um, without those, again, I'd say normal budget. Everything else that's in there is a is a normal budget. There's nothing that should jump out to you there and go, what in the world is going on here? Supplies is minimal. She's got six thousand in her own supply line. Um, and then the conferences and travel dues and fees is all contractual. It's part of the admin contract. They have their own copier. Um, again, Donna and I went back and looked at actuals. They make a lot of copies in special education, so we increased it. Telephone is just a portion of the district group. So minor changes. In the in the grand scheme of things here, look at the amount of money that's applied through grants. It's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is applied for grants towards this program. If we didn't have those grants, this program would be, uh, I think, one of the most, if not the the most expensive program we have. Um, we're, our excess cost, remember, everything over approximately ninety thousand dollars. We get money back from the state. We're anticipating back about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the state next year. Um, based upon, again, those are typically outplacements, uh, where we're getting funds back. The IDA certified is another grant. It's applied to a staff member. Preschool portion is applied to a proportion of a staff member. The classified is applied to a paraprofessional. The purchase service is applied to, oh, I cannot answer that question. Marsha, what's purchase service tied to?
Um, that is, that supplies.
Supplies. Um, so you can see the amount of money that is there. The 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 Medicaid and the outplace tuition that was uh, an old account we had, it's the, we don't, it's drained, it has zero dollars in it, we won't have Medicaid again. And non-lapsing, we have thirty, fifty thousand dollars last year. We can't do that, we don't have it. So you can see, I mean, I've been putting the percentage at the bottom of these programs. This is a fifteen percent increase that in the grand scheme of things, you have very, very little control. Questions about that program?
How do the teachers work? Is there one per grade level, special ed teachers or?
So at Hall, there is one per grade level. Uh, they teach the continuum of or provide the continuum of services. They have uh, caseloads uh, between eight and eleven students, which is a little smaller than the average. The average is fifteen. Um, at least in this area. When you start going to different areas, it's up to thirty. Um, you know, I'm hearing, not so much in Connecticut, so the average around the dean, so they're a little bit lower. Um, they are providing uh, resource room instruction during that win period. They are providing direct instruction classes, a language arts or math. And they are going in doing push-in services. We call it supportive, a supportive class, so they're pushing into the language arts and math class. So it's nice that we have a variety of ways to support kids. Um, I really pushed for them to do push-in services. I think that's important. I think it's important for them to be in their contact classes. Um, for one, they are involved in that curriculum. Um, and they're there, right there in the moment to help the student. So there's one teacher per grade at fall. Um, at center, uh, one of our special ed teachers is a preschool teacher. So she is the preschool teacher. She provides services to the regular students and special education students in her program. We have um, three other special ed teachers. One teacher has a smaller caseload of students who need a higher level of service. Uh, the other two teachers are split between um, it's first and fourth grade this year. It's just the way it felt they're split. So they basically have two grades um, per, on their caseload. So it's not a teacher per grade at the owner's school. Um, their caseloads are the same. The smaller caseload is around five students. Uh, the other two have um, eight and eleven kids on their caseload.
And it just depends on what that caseload looks like. So people say caseload matters and it's not, it's it's what's within that caseload.
I'm sorry. The other thing that, you know, we talk about caseload and numbers of kids, but you also need to look at, something I look at is, what are the hours um, that each one of those students have, because some students are going to have more hours in special education than others. So when I'm looking at caseloads, I spend my summer a lot of times looking at caseloads and making sure that we're maximizing our schedule and who's servicing what students. Um, uh, I look at the hours of students that stu- that students have in their IP.
Then we also have to adjust staffing and build around wherever that identified need is. I mean, we sit today, it's at the middle school in particular, it's there's one per grade level. There could be a year where there's none at fifth, sixth, just because it is the way it falls for whatever reason, and that there's five in seventh and eighth. It just depends on your numbers and what your your population looks like.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I just was gonna add that, um, one other really important aspect of pushing is the socialization aspect of it. Um, you know, when I was young, certain students would disappear from the room with a teacher for long periods of time, and we hardly ever saw that child, except maybe at luncheon basis. Um, now that's very different, and all students know each other. Um, they participate in classes together a lot of the time, and the staff members who work with those uh, special education students know the other children as well. So they help build bridges and friendships and relationships, um, help them work in groups and learn how to do those things. So with that situation, if you ask me, is mutually beneficial for all of the children. And um, having paraprofessionals, for example, in a classroom helps them better understand the way the material is being taught and what um, how a teacher approaches it in different ways, and then they can take that information back to the specially, special education classroom or small group elsewhere and take what they have learned from a classroom teacher and apply it now that way. So push-in is more than just um, a table way in the back with like a lady and four kids. Um, it's come a really long way and it's something um, I'm really glad for, and um, it's important. Super important, you know. Yeah. Did anybody have anything else you wanted to say, ask or notice? Marsha, did you need to add anything?
No, I can talk all night long.
Well, we certainly appreciate you and your staff, for sure. Um, are you ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's look at um, program five, which is health services.
Yep, this is, this is a pretty speed program. It's pretty straightforward. We have two registered school nurses. Um, one in each school. Uh, when they're out, my admin team drastically notices that they put on their nurse hat. Um, and so, you know, we we have subs that, at least they're harder to find. Uh, but their contractual rate is there. We give them some some conference money. We pay a a medical advisor in district. It's it's something that we have to do. Um, last year we had bumped, or current year, twenty-one hundred dollars, we had bumped that up because we were hearing through the grapevine there was going to be a significant increase because of the amount of work they had to do because of COVID. Our medical advisor did not apply that. So we bumped it back down to seventeen hundred, um, to where we expected to be, which is good. We increased the sub nurses, a dollar amount, a little bit. And again, that was just simply looking at usage. Um, the four thousand in medical supplies for the year, they stretched their stuff. They get the monster boxes of Band-Aids uh, and materials, and they make it work. They just, as anybody else, they're important members of our staff. They have to get professional development. They need to talk with their peers. So they have have a membership to the Association of School Nurses. Um, they used to get periodic with middle school. They don't now. Uh, because there's so much, I think, online for resources and stuff, but in in the grand scheme of things, it's a small program for a huge value. Uh, I would tell you that uh, there's one job, I don't know that I would have wanted over the last few years with all of the respiratory illnesses that we've had. Uh, and our our nurses have pulled through. The communication's been outstanding. Um, you know, sometimes parents don't like the communication because it's not a physical news, uh, when your child's sick. Uh, but the amount of phone calls they make, the documentation they they take care of, um, and just managing working with Eastern Highlands Health District, working with me, we're, we still have COVID cases coming through. We still track them. We still look for for, there's a cohort of students that are, you know, where we might have a a little bit of a breakout. We pay attention to those things. It's because of their documentation, their communication, so um.
We've been extremely supportive of families too.
Yes.
You know, helping families navigate through COVID and much to be with the children, so that's well appreciated.
And I don't know how you would ever get away with um, cutting a nurse in this district, going to try and share or fewer hours, i- it's just, uh, you have two buildings, you have two nurses. Very, very hard.
Good questions. When is their contract up?
So they're part of this WESS group, which is considered to be the um, non-certified group. It's not, they call it classified sometimes, John. Um, so it's nurses, custodians, paraprofessionals, staff support specialists is in there. Um, it's it's a broad group of people, custodians. I mean, it's, it is a broad group. So I think they're up in twenty-five.
Okay.
So they'll be up for negotiations. Um, and sometimes it just depends on who's at the table and what the needs are. I think in that group, everybody realizes, just because you're sitting at the table, doesn't mean if you're a maintenance pers- person sitting at the table, doesn't mean you're not negotiating for everyone. You are. Um, you're not just negotiating yourself. And I think the people that have been on negotiations, Tracy, have you been on that? Maybe Anne?
No.
Um, yeah, I think it it's, it's a very large group. Some districts have their own, depending on size. Maybe it's a custodian group, as, it'll be a secretary group. It's, it's just, it it varies.
Now with this, it, I I don't know, I know it's, it may come out wrong, the age of any of our nurses, but if anybody of them were tired, I find it hard that we can find anybody at this pay that come in, because I know a lot of other districts are having issues when hospitals are paying over a hundred just for a nurse.
Yeah. So there is one thing, and this is why our two nurses are here. I'm going to be really blunt with you. They're not here for the money. They're local, they love their schools. Um, they like the hours that are consistency, you know, the consistency of their 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 pro- program, their school. Um, you know, when you go into nursing and you're on a rotating shift, uh, that really impacts family life. Nurse, school nurse positions tend to be, uh, especially in small districts, really, people like them. It doesn't mean that you will have a hard time feeling it, but they like that position because of the consistency. They'll find ways to, they, if they want, they can maximize their pay. Do it somehow or someplace. So, um, it just happens to be where our our folks are at right now. Um, you're right, they could make a lot more money as a registered nurse doing something else. But those, that consistency doesn't matter in small.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's, there's some school districts that have six, seven hundred kids that have one nurse. That's enough. Um, that's a, they're busy day. So if we take care of our people, we do it intentionally. These these folks are no different.
Nope, I get it. My ex- nurse at the high school, so.
You know.
Um, w- we have a program, I'm assuming they can chart on.
So they were using SNAP, oh, SNAP, not SNAP?
Yeah.
Um, that's not the the food thing too. Um, we bought it with COVID funds at the start of COVID, just to help them, and they found it that they were faster charting on paper.
Yeah.
And so they just be, basically keep files on kids and chart their medical records individually, and they lock them up at night.
For ten years?
Huh?
We have to keep them for ten years or?
I don't know the number, to be honest. They would, some of them are fifty years. It's, it's, they go on forever, depending on the the student record.
Yeah.
Um, but they they chart and they keep their stuff. They just found it like they were charting on paper and then only to transfer to the program later on. And it was like, why are we doing this when I can just pass the same piece of paper to the next spot and have the same information. So thi- this is the year it would have been up, and they said, we don't want it. That's a savings for us, so, uh, because it's not cheap.
Yeah. Last question, I swear. Um, the licenses for the nurses, are we paying for them?
No.
Okay.
Okay, um, here on page eighteen, where this program is listed down at the bottom, for those who don't have a copy or who are interested. There are a few paragraphs about the importance of these staff members in this program, and um, I think at the bottom, it would be great if it also said that our medical professionals, our school nurses also help with meetings like um, making, making it to PPTs so they can be part of IEP's plans as well as five oh four plans. They participate in those kinds of meetings. Um, they are very heavily involved in the mental health and wellness of our students, not just their bodies. As Anne said, they work with families in a variety of ways, including talking to a first-time mom of a kindergartner who has no idea what to do because her kid has like a weird rash behind her meat. Um, and I have found all of those professionals to always be very uh, willing to share their knowledge and give me personally, anyway, some advice about what in the world to do with my girls, which is appreciated, but not something that they're required to do. So it's kind of a nod to our community and the way that we care for one another. Um, they make sure people who have braces come and brush their teeth. That's super important. Um, and just, again, the impact that they have on those kids' lives. Sometimes that is the grown-up a student connects to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes a kid wants to go to the nurse every day, not because they're sick, they don't really need the cough drop, but because getting a Mrs. Fox hug changes everything. So I don't know how you put that in words to add to that paragraph.
Yeah.
But it's really, really important stuff.
Yeah.
And so we very much appreciate them and everything that they do, and it does not reflect that here on this grid, on this page.
Student attend- attendance teams too, they're, they do, they're for those, I mean, they're, they're, they do a lot.
Lucky.
We are lucky, for sure.
All right. If you all are ready, then we can move on to item seven, program six, curriculum and staff development.
Okay, so um, the funding for support for curriculum work will help us obviously keep the progress going that we've made. Um, whether it's writing new or in that revision. So these funds are typically used to pay teachers. The first one there, the support for curriculum leadership, that's typically used for additional work. So when we have summer hours or summer curriculum hours, they get a contractual rate. We keep writing, we can pay them, um, because obviously they're not going to work for free. So there's a block of hours there. It goes fast. Um, it doesn't have to be for that. It could be for something else curriculum-related. It could be be for materials, it's just whatever we're trying to do with curriculum in leadership. Um, Jackie years ago built this program uh, with some very specific things in mind, and that was one piece. Like you always have to have those dollars. As soon as you lose them, revisions, where are you going to do that? Because the revisions on a half-day, when you have a small number of half-days, it's not going to happen. They're not going to ever get done. Um, so that number's just flat. Um, the team leaders is is in this program. It's contractual, it's part of the WEA contract. Same thing with outside conferences. What I'll tell you is, um, each person gets, I believe it's four hundred dollars. And we're, that's half of what, we budget half of what they. And we're, that's half of what we budget half of what they could get. It's because they don't always use the funds. So that could be a line that I go over some years depending on funding, but we also sometimes use grants for those things. I budget where based upon usage. And we found that that ten thousand dollar point years ago, people looked at me when I um, or sorry, the yes, the outside conferences. When I went from twenty thousand to ten, people could be like, you're taking a risk. And I said, just look at the last years. It's you can see how much has been spent and the number of, I'll say, high quality things that we had provided in district over the last several years in particular. A lot of people haven't gone out because of it, because we provide somebody good things and they go elsewhere and they're like, eh, it wasn't very good. This was better than what we did in district. So um that's contractual. The teacher workshops in-house. We can pay for subs, we can pay for a specific workshop, we can bring in a speaker. Um it's an another way where we're trying to get in-house training done and it's just where the line comes from. Um we have a contractual line for paraprofessional workshops, minimal, not a lot of them take care, uh take advantage of it. However, we have to provide certain hours for them. They have to have a certain number of hours. So we've purchased like um in the past, we've had. Online programs they can log into and and have some online learning. Uh they do participate in some of the items that we do. Uh so there's a there's a paraprofessional line for that. And then there's a professional development committee. Um and that those funds are probably the most flexible of this group. Um if you wanna bring in a speaker, if they wanna build something. Um right now, the T val committee is doing teacher evaluation plan over. They may choose to use some of those funds, even though right now they're frozen. So um there's a variety of things there and then workshop materials is it's minimal. We do apply the um title two grant, the entire title two grant to this program. So. Um you see the number there. I did drop. Um the line, the teacher workshops in-house down significantly. And one of the reasons I did that. Is because the, we have two grants right now, uh the right to read grant and it's basically a right to read grant, small town. And then right to read grant, just regular right to read grant. And it's about ninety thousand dollars and that's the grant that we're gonna use to hopefully buy all of our K three. Programming, we have to have the new ELA program that we're reviewing. Um I wrote into that grant professional development line. And so there's about twenty thousand dollars in between the two grants, which is why I felt comfortable taking this out of here. I did not write it as an offset. And the reason why is because I don't know how much the professional development is gonna cost yet. If I knew the number, I'd just write it as an offset. But. If the grant totals ninety thousand dollars and we only need five thousand dollars for the P E uh P D. I can buy eighty five thousand dollars with materials, if that makes sense. If the materials are sixty thousand and and we can use thirty thousand for P D in some way or another, cause it's the only way you can use those grants. We'll use it. We'll find a way to do it. Um so it's, that's the reason why I dropped that line down. Questions about that program? Same P D, we're gonna keep doing this, you know, around, you know, project-based learning and open sci ed and the science stuff, the curriculum rollout of units. Science of reading stuff, a mixture of math. All that's where all of this, the that professional development, this is where this, those funds come from. This is an eleven point seven two percent decrease.
Say that word one.
I know, I know. Still bad writing, cause I I don't, professional development is really, really important. Um and you know. When you do it well, your staff notices, so.
But if you have that right to read grant.
I do.
That's supplementary.
I do. And like the only, I told you last time, the only grant, I don't write the entire amount off as an offset in the budget is the REAP grant. If something came up and I said, we need to do that and the stat said, we need to do this, I would try and find a way to do something, so.
Alright, um we are moving on to program seven, which oh, I'll leave.
Yes, program seven's fast. It's a two nine eight percent increase um despite the lower heating rates. We we control the rates. Um even though the the cost went down, we looked at our usage. Um and so the a request this year for for twenty four, twenty five is a little bit higher than last year, even though the rate is a little bit lower. Um we use a lot of fuel. Um and sometimes it just depends on if it's a really cold winter or not. So. Um the other two, the water went up slightly, the electric stayed flat. Uh and then the most annoying one I hate talking about every year is the Siemens lease, the energy performance contract lease. We are in year eleven of seventeen.
What is that for?
So um years ago, we put in spray foam. Uh well, at the time was considered to be high efficiency lights and then LEDs came out. Um we put in some monitoring systems, so like shut off, so computers, desktop computers would shut off at night. Um to reduce energy usage, um motion sensors in classrooms. So when you're not there for a period of time, you're saving energy. Uh things like that, building the envelope, sweeps on the bottom of the doors, things like that.
A lot of money.
I would say the the way it was sold was that the savings. Um that you would see on an annual basis would be more than you were paying. I can't tell you if that's true or not anymore. The system that they use to monitor it was for. Um and uh we actually took it out of the schools. Uh I don't know if it's still whole. I shouldn't say that. Uh we took it out of center school. We put in a uh Delta panel, which is um so much easier to use. And it's not our proprietary. And it's cause Siemens was proprietary. And now we can monitor the freezer temp, we can monitor the temperature in the classroom, we can get an alarm when a water pipe breaks. Um so much better, but it is one of those things that's frustrating. Uh each year increase the payment creeps up a little bit more. Uh but I can't tell you if the savings is covering the difference. I don't know. Um. I will tell you, I think the spray foam is one of the reasons that the hatchet center school was leaking, because I think the expansion of it. The roof made a difference. So it's now repaired, but um yeah, year eleven seventeen.
You don't get anything for it now.
All that work was done on the front side of the new project, correct?
Can we nitpick that contract?
You could try, but I signed, now you're stuck. I mean, you are stuck with it. You got all the services and it was the cost of the services at the time. I think it was. Or if I'm if I'm right, it was, it was, you know, in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. It was a lot of money.
Well, didn't they say the spray foam would be effective for a certain period of time or they didn't like back up and?
I don't remember. It was, it this predates the the this project that came through. I mean, I could, we could pull the contract, but. Um you know, the light bulbs used to be free, that portion stops. And now honestly, when we replaced light bulbs, we're changing the valves so that they'll allow for an LED because so much better. It went from, so a lot of these lights used to be three, this same type of system used to be a three light system. You move it to a two, save energy, you do a little more of a lot, um as long as it's still bright enough for the hallway. But there's, yeah, I. It's a lot of money. To half a percent in your budget every year.
For six more years.
Yes. I tried to bring this to C I P to say, will you please pay this off? And they said, no.
Is there any interest on it?
Oh, yeah.
Does it accumulate?
Uh I I don't, I don't know that. I I gotta assume you have to pay the full amount and it's already been calculated in, whether you paid or not, I think it's been calculated in.
So given all something here to say, is it, is it even remotely marginally worth having our town attorney look at it? The contract and see if there's anything that they can do. That's a lot, as you said, repeatedly unlo- unlearning.
Yeah, I mean, I can get more information on it. I just, I'll be honest with you, I choose not to look at this number. Cause the first time I saw it and I asked questions about it, it was really frustrating. Um I can, I can do that. I can pull the contract. Um and get probably the entire list of things that they did. Um but that was from what I understand, that was the core, the spray foam, the door seals, occupancy sensors, the light bulbs. I don't know what else they did. Maybe there was a boiler in there, but I don't think so. Glad to do it.
Are we allowed to?
I will share. Say it again.
If we have the funds, are we allowed to pay it off early?
I believe so, yes. Four million dollars, you got in your pocket?
No, fair, good question. Okay. That is um, does anybody have anything else to ask? Great, okay. We are moving to program ten, which is involving the fringe benefit beyond substitute.
This is usually the program that I I uh dread talking about because there's usually a huge medical increase. Um and this is one of those years that it's actually decent. So this program overall. Has a one point one percent, a one point one nine percent increase. That's unheard of right now. Um it's just because of our usage, which is good. This also has has our substitutes in it. And so that first line under salaries, again, I went back and looked at usage over numerous years to see how, what we use for subs. And brought it down some because I felt like we could safely cover that number. A few years ago, maybe two years ago, the Board of Ed, um I did a presentation on the impact of a long-term sub. And when a teacher goes out for FMLA, whatever it may be, you need a long-term sub. It's expensive and it happens almost every single year. And there was no budget for it. It would come on the sub line and then the sub line would be overspent each time. So we added in twenty thousand dollars. So there's a twenty thousand dollar line. I think it actually started in um twenty one, twenty two. Um the the first year we did it and we've used it every year. So. That's what that line is. Substitute line for paraprofessionals was increased because uh it was, we needed more funding there. Um it's an actual, was actually being used. The employee benefits. That was nice to see that come down. That's the medical insurance. That is obviously contractual. The contractual part of that is obviously we have contract kinetic air, but it's also contractual with all the contracts we have. Admin, W E A, me, um the classified staff, they pay a per certain percentage into it. Realize that this is based on our current census. So ten teachers left and ten, they all had family benefits. And ten teachers came in and they all waived insurance. You see huge savings. Huge savings, probably to the tune of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Sometimes this goes in your benefit, sometimes it doesn't. So the census today, this is what it is. You could have people leave that are waiving benefits and the next person that comes in takes family insurance. That's a twenty five thousand dollar swing for one person. So insurance is expensive. This is where it falls today and um we have one placeholder in our insurance. We used to have two, um and we found that it wasn't being used and one was a safer place. Placeholder means it's not assigned to anyone, so that if that one person does come in and needs insurance, it doesn't hurt you right away. Second person, you have to figure it out, right? The dental insurance um was flat, uh slight decrease. Again, the de- decreases because of. The um census, the number of people taking insurance or not taking insurance. Life insurance was status quo, unemployment was status quo, uh kerma was status quo. Although at some point, although now this is, I mean, uh the workers comp. Um status quo, the social security, Medicare went up and I had to go and talk to Donald about that. It was a significant increase that I had never seen before. And it's based, I, that's why I wrote the the blurb on the bottom. It's it's the, they do it off the current salary pool. And that the pool, the uh of current employees that you have. So there's a formula that they factor and figure out that total salary pool and they multiply it by a percentage, basically to figure out what you owe for taxes. And you have to pay. So it's a little bit higher. Guess what's out of your control based upon your current census. You gotta do it. The reimbursement for tuition is basically certain people are eligible uh beyond their masters for uh coursework. It's in their contract. If somebody asks for it, there's dollars and dollars in there. So there's probably two people that asked, which is why we have a couple thousand dollars in there. The tax sheltered annuity is part of the W E S S contract. Actually, there's several contracts that have it. Um and that's contractual in their contracts, that forty six thousand is based on the current census, again, our current pool of staff. If it changes, that could change. So of all of the programs that. Typically, we see a ten, fourteen percent increase that we, I dread, this is, these numbers are beautiful. I e- did email our reps um who deal with our health insurance and our dental. And asked, because they had mentioned in our meeting, there was potential for a decrease because our our numbers are so good on the health side. And I didn't get a response back yet. It doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, but um they said there's potential for that. And I care could come back and say, we're gonna give you a little money back next year because your overall population and usage is so good. They typically look at this uh by the number of employees that are using over a hundred thousand dollars worth of services. So. We have, I believe, one right now. Which could be a lot of things. I mean, you know, a big ER visit could be a hundred thousand dollars. But it's it's recurring. So when I say our usage is good, if your usage is not good. There were districts last year that saw forty percent increase, forty four zero increase in their health insurance. Because their usage was very high. They had had high claims cases. And to be able to insure them, that's what it was gonna cost. So. Two things are volatile, special ed and benefits. And this is one, one's real good in here and one's not so good.
But all necessary.
All necessary.
Everything is.
Yeah, I think people would love to have, uh you know, we have an average benefits program. It's average. It's not bad. It's not great. If you want a great program, it costs you more money. Just the way it is, we all have insurance, we know that. We could have a better dental program. It's gonna cost you more money. You can have a better medical program. It's gonna cost you more money. So. Questions about program ten? So was that a no? Sorry, I jumped right in.
Okay, jump on.
So I guess this is kind of the meeting where I say to you, I try and try and read your poker faces and go, where are you at? Nobody fell off their chair when I said five three seven last week. I, you know, took a breath after that happened. I I realized the tie. Um we've already been working on what do we do if, and the what do we do if, I say, what do we do if? Um you say, I would like to investigate uh an addition of this or a cutting of this. A removal of this. Um we prepare for those things. I'll be really frank with you. I'm trying to read your faces and what I'd say is, I, I think you understand the needs based budget that's in front of you. There's not a lot of fluff in here. I do have some small things that we've been just identifying literally over the last week. Part of it was today. Um looking at the R F S R grant that's gonna be drying up. I don't like buying things that are gonna come back in another year. But we do have some things in this budget. Um such as, I'm just gonna give you the example, is the Bridges program, even though you haven't even approved it, it's in the budget. It's a one-time purchase. That would be a good reduction through an R F S R grant. I could just apply that. That would reduce your budget eight thousand dollars. I think. There's potential that by next week, I could be under five percent. Without major changes, like I'm not going to them and saying, what are you gonna cut? Like things that I've already identified because I have funding in the R F S R fund, that's gonna dry out September thirty. Some of that, I'm gonna tell you the good news is that I've applied or I just applied today to the state to apply forty five thousand dollars of that to this year's budget. To maintain staffing levels because of special education. I also still have money in our best or that I could apply to one-time things that won't hurt you work. And what I say, what I mean when I say that is, say you take fifty thousand dollars, this grant is going away. You offset your budget fifty thousand dollars on things that next year, when you budget, they're gonna be back again. Well, guess what? It's gonna hit you next year. I don't like paying for things like that unless it's a recurring grant. I know I have about fifteen thousand dollars of things, items, such as that Bridges program. Um now that I know what I have left in our investor, that I could do an offset for, meaning. Now that I know what I have left in our investor, that I could do an offset for, meaning I would purchase them now and remove them out of this budget. I think from the perspective of good faith, or particularly the Board of Finance, it would be a good move for you to say, give me the nod and say, you really should look to see if you could do that. I didn't do it before because honestly, I didn't know if I was gonna have our best or money left. And now that we've gone through painstaking task of full audit of that program, we know exactly where we're at. I know that I cannot extend Aaron. But I can use the funds to offset current year staff. So beyond that, I'm not gonna make any recommendations to you for items that are cuts. I would have more additions. We have our list of things. If you said, what would you do next? We are prepared for that. It's not pretty. It's people. And before, if you're, this is why I think it's really important when I'm having this conversation with you. Integrity is really important to me. I will not put something in front of the board without, especially when it's a position without talking to that person first. If I was gonna put forward a position to be eliminated from the budget or we're gonna have a discussion about it, I'm a hundred percent gonna talk to that person first and say, I wanna let you know the budget's high. We might need to cut some money. The first position is yours. And if there's gonna be a discussion, I wanna let you know. It doesn't mean I'm advocating for it, but I'm giving them a heads up because I feel that's the right thing to do. So if you're saying to me we're comfortable where it is, then I don't have to have that conversation. But if you're saying to me, we really feel like you need to do some more work on this, I need to know that. Because when I walk back next week, I wanna present some options in front of you so that it's not on your very last meeting, if you need, if that makes sense. Then how do you handle yourself there?
My last speaker, I just wanna make sure that. Can I, can I just comment? Go ahead. Okay. So, um, as I continue to talk about us, I have a group of folks, this is how I perceive us, a group of folks who are here to advocate for the kids' need. I appreciate the fact that you all have participated in this budget and I tried, I looked through this thing five. I know you've looked at it way more than that, but five times I've tried to find like, what can I, what can I see, what can I see? And there's, there's really nothing. Like the things that, that you have budgeted for are contractual, are legal, are things that we can't say, we can't pay for that because we have to pay for that. And it, it hurts my heart a little bit to hear you talking about this is what I could do if I had to. Like, I don't want you to do anything. And, but I understand we're not the heel end all. I, I understand that it goes, you know, other places after this. So I think in good faith, that's a wonderful thing that you talked about. But we, there's, there's a commitment that we need to have as a community to pay for things our kids need also. So if this is the budget that you're putting for, we've had a thoughtful discussion about it. You've laid out soup to nuts, everything that every department needs, justified it. You know, left and right. To me, this is the budget that we should stick with, I feel like. That's my strong opinion.
Yeah, and the way the world is right now, I don't think five point three seven is that high. I know other districts last year were going for eights. And as you saw, they're going for that again this year. So, and there's nothing in here that's like fluff. It's, we have to do it.
And that's, that's the point that why this discussion is really important and, and why I think it's important in public is that the reality of this, and we went through this my first year when it was the four percent, there was a lot of dialogue. I wish it was recorded. I would point you to this. It really came down to like, here are your five options. If you wanna cut a couple hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, you're talking about three big positions. You're gonna talk about class size. So, and I say three, two hundred thousand dollars is a three percent. Take it down to like a two, three, something like that. That's about what you'd be at. You're going, you're looking at class size. You're looking at the, you know, different positions. It's not, you're not gonna get it out of materials. You're not gonna cut supplies. Those things don't exist. So that's the reality. I think that people need to understand that if, if you're asked, if I'm asked to remove X number of dollars, that's where it's gonna go because that's the only way. And we had this discussion to admin already. And I would just point blank, how can you, what do you see that we could do that would remove significant dollars? There's not without impacting people and you know people impact programs. So the, the dollars that I just gave you in the fifteen thousand dollar range are, are just simple things that like, as we keep working, it's grant-based. I wish I could apply, apply some of the non-lapsing funds to this, but timing wise, I don't know that. I think we're gonna need to use everyone, every dollar of that for special education this year. Even though I think we probably just found some money. And you'll find out more about that in the, our best or the forty-five thousand dollars. We're still gonna be short, but you could apply a little bit, but then you'd have no bulk for a non-lapsing next year. So it's like, you know?
Also, if you start doing layoffs, the morale of the staffing will really take a hit. They'll, they'll, they'll be talking about it and it's just not a good environment.
Yeah. If you start talking about class size in this town too.
Yeah.
You won't have four administrators sitting there. You'll have a room full of people. It is always what has happened here. And I think the lack of people also says there's some trust, right? They trust what the, the board is doing. They trust what the administration's done. We answer questions, but if you start talking about class sizes that are significantly larger, you'll fill those seats. And so.
I'll be in those seats.
I moved to this town.
And that's, I, again, it's, it's, I don't want it to be perceived as a threat, but it's the only way you go in a nine million dollar budget. It's the only way you're gonna cut a couple hundred thousand dollars if you are forced to do that. That's what it comes down to. It comes down to people.
I'm wondering, um, contact.
You go ahead.
I'm just wondering, you talked about applying that, those SFR funds. If we present to the Board of Finance and they come back to us, if we've already applied those funds, we don't have anything to apply when they ask us to reduce.
I think it's good faith though, and I think that's why you do it ahead of time. And that's why you say, look, this is what I presented to the board. We're constantly looking. When I tell you, they're probably sick of me saying, I'm, I'm working on the budget. They don't wanna hear it anymore. But I'm constantly looking for those dollars. And when I say the forty-five thousand that we pulled out of our faster today and I applied for a grant, you know, change to the state today. I'm also trying to fill the, the gap that exists right now.
In this year's budget.
In the current budget. And so we have to fix to that problem. And we're also trying to fix the five point three seven problem. So to me, the five point three seven problem is there's not a lot of things you can do to impact it. But fifteen thousand dollars is fifteen thousand dollars. And if, I don't know where it brings, I mean, a point three is like thirty thousand. If I can look to, that's where I need to, why I'm trying to gauge where you're at. But again, you understand my one and done thing. That's the way to do it. If it's something that's gonna come back, like library books. I can give you eleven thousand dollars out of our faster, offset the budget, eleven thousand dollars for library books. But the problem is, guess what's in bu, in the budget next year? Eleven thousand dollars is back now for library books.
And that reflexes and increase.
And now the buff is back up. So you're gonna pay for one, it's the purchases that you have one time. And that's what Aaron pulled me right away. You know, the Bridges program is one. There's a couple of things that are, you know, PBL based or some books that you just buy books one time for your academic programming. There's not a lot of those purchases. That's where you would wanna use your RPSR dollars.
Well, um, looking on page thirty-eight, which is your five-year budget history. Every budget is based on the previously approved budget, not based on a previously encumbered budget. And it seems like, I know this year you said we're having a tight budget. And I think I even saw an email that we're having a freeze currently. I just wanna make sure that as somebody who is pushing a budget forward and anticipating the approval from the townspeople who are approving our budget, that we're using the budget to the best of our capabilities. I appreciate being shown the end of the year turnback and what's being returned to the general fund, but I don't necessarily agree with that. I'm still trying to learn about it. So maybe this is just my upfront interpretation. But it's my belief as a taxpaying citizen that if I'm going to approve a ten million dollar budget for the school, I wanna make sure that they're using that ten million dollars. And it seems like historically we've asked for different increases. But we're really giving back more than we, the increase we've asked for according to these numbers. So is there fluff, for lack of a better word, figured in for us to keep in our non-lapsing fund? You know what I'm trying to ask? Like, so.
I can explain.
Do you understand what I'm trying to add?
Yeah, yeah. And this is why I did this slide because it, this is transparency for me. This is why I value it. Because when I created this slide, I wanted people want to realize that we do turn back money when it's in the budget that we're not just going out and spending furiously, that it goes into our non-lapsing fund. So we, when it's pouring out, like it's pouring out now, that we have funds to pay towards an outplacement and we don't have to go back. And then the money that's there that goes into the general fund is actually applied to keep taxes low the following year if there is money. Now, if someone would look at this and go, okay, so nineteen, twenty, you asked for a four point six seven percent increase, a huge increase in dollars, and then you turned back more. That's cool. Everything shut down. You didn't pay as many bills and that's the reason why the money's there. When I say health insurance, we have that number sooner than we've ever had it this year. There are times we go through the entire budget season, Sam, and we don't know if we're gonna have a ten percent increase or not.
Right.
What they do is they, hey, you can start your increases. You should, you should budget for a maximum of fifteen. You won't have an over fifteen percent increase in your health benefits. Fifteen percent off of two million dollars is a heck of a lot of money. And then it comes down. So some years, that first year, we were anticipating a fourteen percent increase in insurance. And so that's a killer. I mean, it's, it's a lot of money. And so each time we return funds, a lot of times it's in stuff like, if, if you were to look at these line items through the specific budget document, not by program, you would see that all of their supplies are spent. The funds that are left over tend to be, if there's a health insurance, there's some savings there. And I really don't believe in, if I have some good thing I need to do, I bring it to the board and I draw up projects to the board each year without overspending. Not like, hey, I wanna have gold laced, gold lined railings. It's not that type of stuff. But then I also feel like we have a responsibility to be transparent and return money if there's money there. So typically, and this is why I made the comments below, because it didn't have the comments below. And I was looking at the document going, someone's gonna think the same exact thing that you're thinking right now. Like, they're over budgeted and we're not. Staffing, again, if ten people leave, I have ten new people hired. They could all go from be making eighty-five thousand and now every person I hire is making fifty-five. And now I've got a huge pocket of money. Or it could be vice versa. They could all be making fifty-five and the pool that comes in is now making eighty-five because they're experienced. It just goes up and down. It just happens here with all of those, these years. And there are almost every single one of those years is tied to shortage area positions. I can't find a special ed teacher. I can't find a speech and language teacher. I can't find a science teacher. I can't find a math teacher. World language. All of those things. Well, if I leave a position open for a year and they have benefits, that's a hundred thousand dollars. If that person's doing family benefits in their top step, it's a hundred and twenty. That's where these things add up. So even though it looks like, you know, hey, you, you know, they, they turned back a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. That could be fifty thousand dollars in savings from an, an, an adjustment health benefits and not using our placeholder. That'd be fifty thousand. And the balance could be one person that left or unfilled.
But like, so we're returning to the general fund. And then you had made a comment earlier that we had a couple of projects on CIP that were told not to be on it. So why can we not keep the money that was already approved for us to use and use it for projects or paying a chunk towards the, the semen grant?
I asked about Siemens one year and that was not the.
You know what I'm trying to say? If we're already going to use this budget and it goes to the general funds, never to be seen to us likely again for our program.
Yeah.
Cause it's the general fund. It's not the Board of Education money that was already approved by the townspeople in our own budget. I appreciate the fact that we're hoping that the money, the excess funds are going to potentially keep taxes down. Do they ever really? I don't understand why we're not using it for our own benefit of our own program. That's all.
No.
And I know it's kind of like, we don't know till the end and we're like, oh, we're doing a good thing by giving it back. But it kind of seems like maybe we should be washing our own backs with the money that we're already approved to use.
Let me give you an example.
If that makes sense, I don't know.
It does. It does. A lot of times it's timing where we can't spend the funds beyond July one. So a lot of the CIP projects you can't do. You can put it in non-lapsing. We'll do things like one-shot deal. So what I just opened up with my laptop is, I'm gonna give you the example of last year. We had a lot of money last year. And they know I just kept going back to them. What could, what do you need? So this is last year. And this was all public. So I'm not, I'm not like letting the cat out of the bag here. There was a rack of folding chairs and for center school. We replaced windows. We did all the window caulking in center school in the lower wing. We repaired the steam pipe in the maintenance office. We repaired the boiler. We repaired a valve on the boiler. We did a steam trap in Nizer's room. We did electrical outlets. We did, I'm just going through the list here. There was a whole bunch of. We did two classroom carpets. We did new signage in the front of the building. We added electric outlets in a bunch of classrooms. We bought books. We done picnic tables. We bought brand new furniture for the library, for the elementary library. Two years ago, we bought it for whole school. We bought a new scoreboard. We updated our radar signs, which were broken. We updated our security cameras and I'm still, even though I applied for a security grant, some of that might come back. Added a TV for the conference room. We added iPads to the UA group, Udonahoy Arts group who wanted iPads. When I say like, we have our list of things and I have a running list of things like that. Two years ago, we replaced all the staff laptops without having to budget. So that's typically how we've done things. And we have, always have the list. It's always about timing. Because typically these grants and the orders don't, they don't always like to. I'm like, can I just go one week into July to finish this, this project? It's almost done. I'm not supposed to do that. I'm really supposed to spend then that fiscal year. If the majority of work is done, they're okay with it. So those types of projects, especially when you have a lot of snow days and you go deep into June, we just can't do. And sometimes I won't know where our final number is because we have so many encumbrances that we have to track it. So Donna gets tired of seeing me in May because I'm constantly coming back. So we do return funds. Last year I was really transparent to the Board of Finance and to the Board to say, we're gonna return a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna return more than that because we're gonna ask for the remainder of it to go into our non-lapsing account to max it out. And good thing we did. So I think that's the point of it does appear that way, that we're over budgeting, but I assure you, we're not.
I just didn't know if there was, um, we could use it like we, we could have paid off the Siemens lease or things like that.
That will be your call. If you get to that point on the board where if I, you come back and I say, hey, there's three hundred thousand dollars. These are the projects that I would like. If you said, can we pay the Siemens thing? I'd say that's up to you. You could.
Or like if we could have a separate account for the roofs or the boilers or.
That's your non-lapsing fund or general fund. That's what they have to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was it true?
Yeah. Region nineteen has a different type of fund because they're a regional school.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like a shame that it's our already approved budget and it's excess funds that we couldn't be using for stuff that we need. That I'm just like, oh, here, hopefully, you know, when we ask for money, they will give it to us because we've been nice and we're like, nope, see you later. So, I don't know, that was just like, you know. My understanding of.
Casey, did you wanna mention anything about those closing remarks here to me?
I think that we should just put this budget forward. That is, so far, we, we won't see, um. I'm never a fan, I'm never advocate for cutting positions because I know that our students. To this day, still suffer from budget cuts that were made in staffing years ago, and we can't fix it because once it's gone. We often can't bring it back unless it's an issue of class size that goes above our, um, policy. Cause, um, we have less teachers inside the eighth grade than we used to. They worked it with the schedule to make it better now than it was. In the past, but our students did used to have science and social studies the entire school year. Until last year, they used, um, this current year, this current year or last year, you could've switched it.
Oh, yes.
Prior to that, my children who are now graduated, one's graduated from high school, the other one's graduated from college. Only had science and social studies, um, two quarters of the year. And then they switched to the other quarters. And that put them, I feel, at in this deficit once they got going to high school. And that was a, an issue of a teacher got cut or a couple of teachers got cut. Ten, fifteen years ago, and we've never recovered from that. In the elementary school, in the, you know, center school, if we, if we cut a teacher. If we, our class sizes rise up, we can fix that. Um, because of policy that we have a certain, a certain limit, and then we have to add a teacher back in to keep the class sizes at the policy level.
And I just wanna interject, I was in no way saying that I was advocating for a budget cut. I was just seeing if there was a way, instead of returning to the general fund, that we could keep it for ourselves. I wasn't like, let's cut it.
Or apply, yeah.
I hope that that.
No, I didn't think, I didn't see that.
Cause you're looking at me.
My other, I'll try to like.
And I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misinterpreted.
Some people on the budget know that that's one of my big things. I will always come back to that sciences, older studies thing. Um. I also think we've spent a lot of money, um. On professional development to build this curriculum and, and keep it robust. And so. Uh, going back to comments that were made by our lawyer during the, you know, our attorney during the, the budget retreat about, um. And it's been talked about many times in town, here in Wellington, about minimum, I mean, uh. Per pupil expenditure and how the attorney. Said you cannot do per pupil expenditure, especially with a budget like this, because. Um. The, the costs that are mandated and by law for what we have to put in this budget, um, do not. Necessarily benefit every single student in our population. They're required so we can have our school, um, functioning and follow the laws and make sure that everybody gets the need, what they need. So they can have a successful education, but it doesn't benefit every student equal, equally. I think that's the way I wanna say it. I'm not saying like, we have to do it, we wanna do it. But if we cut out a teacher, that's gonna affect a larger population than, than increase that we have for. A smaller part of our population, I guess. So I'd say we just, we go with, I do, I, I don't know what, I'm kind of in a quandary in my head. I think we all are about, do we? Take the recommendation and spend some of that money ahead, or do we hold that as our? Placeholder to say, yeah, our bargaining. I don't know what, what to do about that.
I, when I budget, if you've lived this with me, you know, like, I'll come back at certain points during the budget season, say I have new information. This happened this year for the first night. We had, you don't even know yet unless you have kids in school. We had a teacher resign from whole school.
Big news.
Was it, was a top step and left for personal reasons. I took twenty thousand dollars off the budget because I would anticipate that I'm gonna hire a top step person. It's already off the budget. Like, that's how quickly we make adjustments. So your five-three-seven was closer to a five-five-six. When they talk about like, on the go, I'm constantly doing those things. I bring you that R F S or stuff because it's on the go. I have that information now, and that is what makes us credible. Why I say it's not a bad thing to do and that, it's not a lot of money. In the grand scheme of things, you have the funds to do it. I truly believe that. It's not gonna hurt you next year. I would make that recommendation, right? I wouldn't struggle to, to make the recommendation would be. Take thirty thousand dollars off the things that are gonna come back next year and you're already starting. With staff increases and something you have to put back in the funding. So. We constantly change this on a day-to-day basis, just the paper that's in front of you. Keeps getting worked on, so I can come back with you and just show you what the numbers would look like if those changes were made. Um, and if something happens before, around anything, I would bring it to you. I'm not changing programs, I'm not changing class sizes, I'm not cutting programs. You know, she's gotta hand it over there.
Um, I appreciate that, um, the way that you framed that. I feel like. Making the, the adjustment based on the, um, grant as a kind of a fluid way that the budget is evolving over these next few weeks. Makes it more palatable to me than you, like, sitting up midnight by your lantern, trying to figure out, scratch out a budget. Um, I have a cop too, so it's, that's right. So. I, I would be way more supportive of that, like, to do that Bridges thing with the grant money then.
Yep.
She doesn't make emotions for me.
No, you don't have to. It's just, I did, I wanna have some direction because what I can't do. Is if you come in and say, okay, well, how would you pay twenty thousand dollars? I don't wanna have that conversation if it's, if people, number one, and. I've gotta make sure I have the math right with Donna. We sit through and we'll go through the program, make the program changes, then the overall budget change. So basically, what we try to do is we do a one-shot deal, so I can come back to you, even though you haven't seen the, the, the remainder of the programs. I have a couple of changes that I can recommend that aren't gonna hurt anything, that are one-time purchases that can take a little bit of money off your budget. Because they're brand new as of yesterday and today. And it might be enough, boy, it'll be so close, to get you under five. It might be enough, it might not. But again, good faith is part of the budget process, and if I feel like if I have that information, and I'm not, it's not a cut, I'm not recommending a cut.
Right.
I'm recommending that you're pre-purchasing something, um, prior to. The budget process being over.
And then you can remove it from this budget.
Correct.
That's good. So do you think that's something we should add to the agenda for, can we add that to January thirty-first's agenda, just?
It would basically just be the update of the programs and adding the programs before.
Mm-hmm.
And as part of that update, I would share with you, here's, here are the things that, um, the new information, and here's what it would do to your bottom line.
Yeah, I think that's what it sounds like we're hoping for, so that would be great if that could get tacked on to the thirty-first. Um, definitely a need budget. I think it's really important to make it as clear as possible that many of the things are required by law. And many of them, we don't have much say in or any. Um, I've been in education for over twenty years, so that, that looks pretty bare bones to me. Um, and to show up to Board of Finance and speaking to people in public, the more backup plans or things that, different avenues, things that we try, the better, I think. Um, so it just shows effort and willingness to understand the state of things overall, so.
Okay, so, go ahead. I don't wanna interrupt.
Not at all.
Um, did you, have we heard from Board of Finance, is there any, in the past, they've sent a letter saying. To all the departments in town, and we're sending you budgets, that they want it to be a certain percentage or not. Have we heard anything?
I think the prior chairman, did you get one?
No, they just met last week.
So there, two meetings ago, they talked about the need of, um, personnel on the board. Um, they talked about it and didn't approve it, and then they talked about last meeting. I think the good thing is it doesn't have a number in it, is what I've heard. Um, and that's a big Mike McCoo thing, and I think he and I had the conversation way back when to say. You can send me a, a letter that says zero percent increases, you know, do what you can to get a zero. We do that every year. We do it anyway. I don't, we don't need a letter to say that. We're gonna put forward the best budget we can. For the needs. We have plenty of wants, but this is a needs-based budget. And so I anticipate that's what the letter's gonna say. We haven't gotten it yet, and that makes sense that we haven't gotten it yet because there is a change in that personnel. Um. If it says something different, I'll be very surprised.
If I remember, I watched that meeting, if I remember correctly, it was going to be saying. Um, just generally, like, don't expect that you're gonna get everything that you're asking for. Which hopefully, nobody does at this point, we should know that. But I think that was the gist I remember. So, we haven't received it yet, they were gonna work on something.
It was that, and if you had something new that was significant, that they wanted you to pull out and identify it, you don't have anything new. Your, your new thing is your special education group, of course, I'm gonna present that.
The other thing is, um, could we negotiate with the Board of Finance to have them help us pay some of those so that they come out of the budget?
They, they don't have the, I don't know that they, I mean, they have the general fund, and their way of paying for things is basically using the funds. Out of the general fund to offset all the budget, not just Board of Ed.
Okay.
So when they get all of the budgets together and they say, okay, we, you know, we, they always talk about the percentage that they have, they're supposed to have around, I think it's eight to ten percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if they're at fourteen percent, they use those funds. And that are quote-unquote access that they've already taxed people on to bring the overall budget down. Right, and those are the, so when I say the money that goes back to the general fund from the Board of Ed's side, that's really what it's going to be.
We're contributing.
They're doing, yeah, we're contributing to that. So some of that helps us, but it keeps our number the same. If they come back and say, you gotta cut two percent. That's gonna be a pretty big challenge.
Yeah.
I think there'll be people at their door. My two cents.
I hope that our public's gonna watch videos, check minutes, ask people questions and show up to the best of their ability. Because it is very important, obviously, especially when we're running so tight here. Um, every little bit helps and every voice definitely matters. Okay, um, so we will be meeting again next week, on the thirty-first, to review Program Eight, which is operations and maintenance, as well as Program Nine. Which is just system-wide support. And I'll see you on then. We need a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second you. Uh, favor.
Aye.